It's 12:15 and we run a tight ship here, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Scott Rose Anthony. I'm the Las Vegas City Councilman for Ward Florida, the mayor pro temp for the city of Las Vegas, and I'll be moderating today. And it's 12:15, and we are going to have the Clark County Commissioner and District F candidates up for the next, looks like about the next hour. So let me read you the rules, candidates. We're gonna stick to a strict schedule of this interview. This is an interview, not a debate, so no back and forth, please. Candidates, you're gonna have one and a half minutes to introduce yourself at the beginning. That's very short, one and a half minutes. Panelists, each panelist is gonna be allowed to ask a question that's gonna be for 30 seconds, and then the candidates will have one minute to respond. If time allows, we'll have the members of the audience also pose a question. We will not have panel members air their personal grievances. We're gonna keep this professional. Complex questions, we really don't need complex questions. And then last of all, the candidate, or the panelists will pose their question to one candidate to answer. If they would like all the candidates answer a question, it has to be a yes or no. So there you go. So we will, okay, we will begin with George, and go ahead and ask your question. Oh, I'm sorry. I knew there was something like this. Why don't you go up here and moderate? All right, we'll start with...
Introductions for candidates?
Leo.
Introductions for candidates?
Yes, go ahead and start. You have 1.5 minutes. Yeah, go ahead and state your name. You have one and a half minutes.
Lyle Escarrow. I've been in the county since 1962. I've been a member of Section F, District Fs, for about eight years now. I graduated from Rancho High School in 1975. Graduated the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers apprenticeship in 1990. I retired from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers in 2012. I did a little volunteer stint through the United Way in the city of Las Vegas down on Fremont Street. And that's my introduction. Thank you very much.
My name is Joe Craftwall. I am the owner of a company called Birds and Beasts. It's a wildlife conservation education...
Keep the mic, Joe.
Closer? Sorry. It's a wildlife conservation and education business. I started when I was 17 years old in California. Moved it here in 1990, and moved it to District F in 1999. I'm a homeowner, and in dealing with my business, I've been involved with lots of government permits from local animal control all the way to the US Department of the Interior. It's taught me a lot about government, good and bad. And I also have noticed in recent years that people like myself who own animals in southwestern Clark County have been facing a lot of challenges with development, as well as in dealing with the county. And that finally prompted me to not sit around and make comments about how things are run, but to actually roll up my sleeves and get in there and try to do something about it and help it out. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, Jason?
My name is Jason Smith. I moved to Las Vegas about eight years ago from Southern California. I have been in District F for approximately one year now, and I'm the newly-elected Vice Chairman of the Libertarian Party of Nevada, and I'm getting more involved in politics over the last eight years, having seen Clark County and the growth and the challenges that it's gone through. And my position is, as a libertarian, I think we need to rely less on government, and I think we need to start relying more on community activities. Instead of collecting money from everybody, paying an administrator, and then doing something, we need to, as a community, get together, find volunteers. My family does a lot of charity work, and I know how charities and volunteers can be more effective than just a government program. So that's what I'm aiming to do.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, Ellen?
Hi, my name is...
Hi, my name is Ellen Nachnora. I'm, I live in...
A little louder, Ellen.
I live in District, yeah, I live in District F since 2000. I'm a Democrat, want to be running in the district. I'm the one with the least name recognition, but I've been around doing volunteer work and party activities. Basically, I am, I'm a regular worker. I am, the reason why I'm really wanting to run is so that there's more openness in the county seat, and so that people, if they have grievances, are able to come to the Commissioner or the Commissioner and at least get a preliminary answer before public hearing. And that's basically to have more communication with the district. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Susan?
Hi, my name is Susan Bonaventura. I grew up in California and Hawaii where I attended Holy Trinity School. I moved to Las Vegas in approximately 1979. I attended Bishop Gorman High School. I also attended UNLV and CSN. Currently, right now, I work for the school district. I'm a special ed teacher's assistant, or I co-teach, and I would love to run for District F because I think we need a change, and I would like to see a lot of job flourishing, flourishments, and just a lot of change, and like, I want to see a lot of openness and communication.
Thank you. All right, very good. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with the questions. A 30-second question with a one-minute response, unless it's directed towards all the candidates, then it'll be yes or no. Jay, we're gonna start with you over there. Go ahead, Jay.
One of the things, one of the commissions I mentioned as far as, which I agree on, is not forcing people to go solar or go green. But how do you feel as far as providing incentives to encourage people to go green? Not that, you know, as far as, when I say encourage them, as far as giving them incentives to encourage them to do it on their own will, where it's beneficial for not, for them, but also for the community?
You want that to be yes or no from each candidate, or you want one candidate to answer that question?
Oh, yeah, that's right. It has to be short and concise. You can't go into elaborations.
Yes, it's a yes or no. I agree with incentives, I can only agree with incentives for...
Yes, exactly.
That's what you want. Okay, Susan, let's start with you. Just kind of yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The answer would be yes if we're talking about a free market incentive, but a taxpayer-funded incentive? I think that's wrong.
Okay.
I agree with incentives to help financing a private solar project.
Okay.
My answer would be yes also.
Okay, very good. Okay, Pamela?
My question is for Jason Smith. So as a libertarian, you believe in less government and more community, which is great. How would you facilitate improvements to education in your community?
Well, thank you. That's actually a huge part of the Libertarian platform, is getting more accountability in order to get better education. I was here for the last round, and some people mentioned homeschooling. And I think homeschooling is a valuable tool, but so are charter schools, and I think what we have to do is be more accountable to the people of Clark County, and not the unions and necessarily those that benefit from not having competition in the schooling, call it a business, if we have to, because it is. We are trying to take care of something the community wants. There should be competition and accountability. If all of our tax money has to go towards it, I think that accountability has to be enforced a little bit stronger than something that is kind of optional out there. And education is for our kids. We shouldn't just say, "Well, let's leave it up to the government to do. Let's open it up and have a free market schooling industry," if you will.
Thank you. All right, Nathan?
Yes, my question is for Susan. Susan, you made reference to having businesses grow and flourish in your district. What's your plan to get more businesses in your district?
Well, I believe when important issues are in front of the Clark County Commissioners, I would vote accordingly. But we definitely need to have, like I said, businesses flourishing, jobs flourishing, incentives for Summerlin area, you know, hopefully growth, work with contractors, construction companies, and things of that nature.
Travis?
You know what's, oops, you know what's coming, right, Snobber?
Can't wait.
Who do you support for sheriff, for all the panel members? One word, give it up.
Lyle Escarrow.
Moody. Undecided yet. Moody.
Being honest, like...
Right now?
Yeah, I'm just keeping my own rack. So, Joe, you were undecided? Correct.
And Jason was Moody? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moody. Mr. Lombardo.
Okay.
Thank you.
George?
This question is directed towards Joe. Now, you say you work with animals and conservation. As you know, the zoo here is locally being shut down because of running on porta-potties, and this is one of the reasons they've had to shut this place down. Now, we have electric daisies stuff that comes in to run off porta-potties all the time with thousands of people. I'd just like to know what your feelings are on a smaller business like that being shut down and putting the animals, just spicy animals, and also, you know, allowing it to go on at a bigger venue that they're okay with.
We're talking about the facility in Moappa, right?
Yes.
There's more issues to that than just the porta-potties. It was a lot of issues pertaining to a business being run out of a private home. Instead of, as much as many people didn't like the zoo that we had on Rancho Drive, it was county compliant and met all of the various statutes, and didn't get a lot of support for various reasons. This facility in Moappa was the opposite. It didn't meet a lot of conditions and yet still had public support. That's why the public have come out to help them raise donations to get among things their porta-potty situation resolved. My opinion of them is more about turning your backyard animal collection and calling it a zoo. I have some issues there. There's some definitions that aren't really being met. But if we can permit a huge party, I think once it was at the Speedway, if we can permit something like that to operate off of porta-potties, then technically we can operate, we can operate any public event off of porta-potties.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Okay, Melody?
Ms. Bonaventura, you mentioned that you're a special ed teacher.
Yes.
What is your position on school choice?
Oh, I'm all, I'm sorry, I'm all for school choice. I think it's all about choices. If parents want to homeschool their children, I think that's their choice. But I definitely think that they need to have some sort of classes, because it can be difficult. And I also think that social skills are very important in education, and when you get out there, just in life in general. So I do believe that there needs to be more education and more requirements for homeschooling as far as a little bit more of a background, maybe online classes or someplace where the parents can go, because it's very important to educate the children accordingly, and especially kids with special needs. Sometimes I see them come in from homeschooling, and it's, sometimes it can be difficult because of the lack of social skills. So just, I believe that a little bit more education for the parents, some sort of, maybe something through the state or through the government, just to give them a little extra help with homeschooling.
Thank you. Zachary?
This question is for everyone. What's your, what's all of your positions on pro-life?
Okay, yes or no, you are pro-life or pro-choice?
I'm pro-choice.
Pro-choice with conditions?
I would not want somebody that was my wife or girlfriend having an abortion, but at the same time, I won't stop somebody else from making that decision for themselves.
Okay.
Pro-choice. Pro-choice.
Very good. Thank you. William?
This question is gonna be for Joe in regards to small businesses. I asked in the last panel, the veteran population often faces a larger unemployment problem than the average citizen due to their training or the skills that they possess that don't necessarily transfer over. Many of them try to start up small businesses, and small businesses in the valley don't have a huge success rate. What would your plan be in helping them succeed and get off the ground and compete with the big box stores?
I think part of being a small business myself, I have a lot of insight, even though my grandfather, who actually raised me from the age of 14, he was a veteran as well. And sometimes we would get into some discussions, areas like this. But as I've grown up and operated my own business, I realized that for the small guy, there is tons of red tape. I know that's an old cliche, but the amount of red tape, the amount of work that a small person, a private individual, has to do just to get out on the playing field is sometimes already a business killer. So if we can create incentives to help, not really give leverage to the small business owner, but really from education to helping to streamline the amount of requirements, the amount of government fees and licenses that they have to get, we can at least give them a fighting chance off the get-go. And then if their product is desired and it's a good price, I'm sure that they'll be able to compete with the big box stores and things like that.
Thank you. All right. Okay, Mike Schneider's here. Mike, everyone had one and a half minutes to introduce themselves, so you have your one and a half minutes.
Thank you. Mike Schneider, running for Clark County Commission, District F. I was in the legislature for 20 years, four years in the Assembly, 16 years in the Senate. I was President Pro Temp of the Senate, and I was also Chairman of Commerce, Energy, and Labor. And I held that position for a lot of years. So that's, that's the background I bring from a legislative point of view. I was also, I am currently a developer. And actually, Thursday, we just had the dedication of a 226-unit senior apartment complex in Henderson that we built. And that was a HUD...
Stay closer to the microphone.
That was a HUD project, and so the seniors that move in there can only make 60% of the median income for the valley. So most of them ran on social security and that sort of thing. I might go into red tape if you want about doing a HUD project. The red tape is unbelievable, but that's kind of the stuff, so I wanted to discuss that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Lisa?
Well, I actually had my questions, whether Mr. Schneider or Ms. Brager showed up. So since Mr. Schneider showed up, I'll ask this question to you. State Red Rock has been a 14-year battle to keep Jim Rhodes from building a small city continues to Red Rock's National Conservation Area. In fact, I believe as in the legislature, actually voted to approve the Red Rock overlay. On January 22nd, 2013, Susan Brager proposed a land swap with Jim Rhodes in order to protect this area. To date, nothing has been done. There's been no progress made on the land swap. If you are elected, what will you do to speed up the BLM and this land swap?
And Mike, you have one minute to answer the question.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Ms. Brager got in that position because she approved housing to go up on the hill there. So she, she really got herself in a real bad position. So she had to think of something to come out of it. So it is a land swap. And those land swaps are very, very complicated, and she's gonna have to go to Washington, DC, and work on that, get the Clark County lobbyists and their whole lobbying team to go to Washington to work on that. And then work on all of our congressional delegation so that they understand what's going on. Because land swaps, you know, when you're dealing with the federal government, very, very, they're very hard to do. And so, you know, it's gonna take some footwork. You just can't propose it and walk away from it. You really have to work to get this going.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I just, if you're elected, will you, will you take on that, that big task?
Well, I would. And if you don't have my job as a legislator, I went to Washington a lot, so I do have a lot of respect back there, and I will work that quite hard.
Thank you. Robert?
I guess we have answered from all the panelists starting with Susan. Have any of you ever owned and operated or operated a private business?
I have. I tried to start one, and I couldn't get off the ground, and it's because of my anxiety.
I'm currently in the process of starting a small business with environmental cleaning supplies that are truly green and they actually work, but it is a very hard, long road to get up and running.
Small business owner-operator, 32 years.
No, I have not.
Well, as I said in my introduction, I am a small business person, and we do development projects.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Jamison?
Good day, everyone. This is a question I think would be most interestingly answered by Jason. Glad you said environmental. Basically, environmental waste in Clark County, from what I see, maybe in other states, is even how they handle it. People kind of turn a blind eye to it. It's not made a big deal. What would you do differently to make sure this is properly addressed by the county without getting the government too involved?
Well, I think the end of your question is the beginning of my answer. Not having the government involved, considering the government is the only entity in the United States of America that is immune from prosecution for environmental crimes, if you will. And in order to bring accountability, I think we have to shine the light on this. It goes to everything from your municipal services that are regulated, and a monopoly, monopoly is granted by the government because of these regulations about getting into the business. I have a product, for instance, that would remediate sewage and get rid of the H2S. But these products are not corporate yet. They're not something you can make money on and do back channels and stuff like that. So we go through what is known, and what is known is unfortunately, more times than not, greasing somebody's hand to get something done. And I think whenever you have a policy of, "Don't shine the light on it, and we'll get it done," you're gonna always have people immune from prosecution, and other people suffer because they are not either granted the same immunity, or they're carrying the burden for other people.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Karen, anything from you?
Ask, please.
You're good? Okay, all right. We've got plenty of time, so we're gonna give everybody another shot at you, so let's start with William.
With such a large amount of candidates without a sitting incumbent, I'm curious, from each of you, in a single word, single statement, what, what sets you above all the other candidates for this seat?
Okay, Mike, let's start with you, but keep it really in one sentence, okay?
Well, I think I have a dual background, and I'm a business owner, and I've been in the legislative process for a lot of years, and I understand how to move things through bureaucracy. The other thing, I was...
Well, that was only that, that's one sentence, three things. I said, I heard the period, I said period, yeah, so I figured out. Thank you. Lyle?
We live in the, we live in the greatest city in the world, and I would love to help that along.
Great. Joe?
For the last few years, I came to realize that our current Commissioner is a real estate agent and pro-development, and there has been very little consideration given to the open desert that most of us in the southwest area of the county have actually moved here to live and enjoy. And so I may be the only person who wants to tame development so that it takes into account the desert and all the wildlife that is, lives underneath the concrete that's about to be poor.
Man, you know how to make a sentence long. How impressive.
32 years of business is also an entertainment, so sorry.
Jason?
I understand that this is a veterans in politics affair here, but I would like to say brevity, hopefully, is one of them. The other is I carry a Declaration of Independence and Constitution with me everywhere. That's what we swear an oath to, and that's why I honor the oath keepers, and many of you here, I'm sure, are part of the same group. That's what we swear an oath to when we take office, and that's what...
Thank you very much, Jason. Ellen? And speaking of that microphone, please, there...
Can you repeat your question again? Sorry.
Absolutely. With, with such a large group of candidates for one seat, not going against the incumbent, what sets you above all the other candidates for this position for the voters?
In one sentence.
As a volunteer counselor to people that want to involve in the care, I'm a worker, so I would rather help you through the system and not, not let you feel trapped. And if that means I, I give federal assets to you and get you connected to a representative and the House Representative, or, or your Senator, to help you, give me a permit because you're a veteran and you don't understand the system, or...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Susan?
I would say I'm not a career politician, and I would like to do what's best for my constituents.
Thank you. Okay, Zachary, why don't you go next, if you wanna ask another question?
No further questions.
Melody?
Mr. Schneider, welcome. Thank you. I would like to know what your position is on the school choice.
School choice?
Correct.
Currently, Clark County does have some choice, and you can, you can apply to different schools. So there is some choice involved in there. I'm not, I'm not for handing out vouchers to go to private schools, okay? I, I, I just think that's a problem. And let me explain. Most people go to private schools, and why do private schools perform a little better? It's because they're small, and people have bought in to go there. The problem we have in Clark County, and we did a study on that, is we've built schools too large, all right? And the size of the school, an elementary school should be no more than 300, a middle school no more than 600, and a high school no more than like a thousand, all right? The optimum is 900. So we've done those studies. We've called in experts from worldwide to do those. Our problem, again, is schools are too large. The other problem we have in our schools is no windows. Kids are like in prison. You know that we have, we have mandates from the federal government, we have to allow prisoners to have windows and go outside in. And it's been proven that that increases learning when kids have windows in schools.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Jay?
In just a couple of words, if you were elected, what subject would you be most passionate about?
Okay, well, one word, passion. Starting with Susan.
Jobs.
Jobs, okay. Ellen?
Can you come back, please?
Sure. Jason?
The budget.
Okay, Joe?
Residential enjoyment. Schools and teachers.
Degree development.
And Ellen?
Expanding opportunities.
Okay. I like those kind of questions. Very good. Pamela?
Do you support medical marijuana? Yes or no?
Okay, Mike, yes or no? Medical marijuana?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Yes, with restrictions for misuse.
Okay. Jason?
Decriminalize it all.
Yes, for medical purposes only.
Okay. And if I could direct you to the billboard out there, DrReefer.com? 0000. Is this everybody's house? All right, who asked? That was Pamela asked. Okay, Nathan?
Yes, my question is for Jason. Jason, we have an organization here in the valley that's about economic development. They work tirelessly to bring businesses here to create opportunities outside of gaming, being that that's our largest corporation here. What's your plan if elected to help organizations or entities like that expand the valley so we get more jobs here?
That's a fantastic question, and it goes to the heart of what I believe in for, I have an econ degree, and I believe that when you open up markets, you allow competition to give the consumer, or the people of Clark County, the best possible price for the best possible service or good. So what I would do is I would end... So what I would do is I would end federal money coming into Clark County's budget and stop giving monopolies to large corporations that dominate because they have regulations written specifically for them. I want to open it up, let small businesses thrive, stop giving huge tax deductions and backroom deals for these corporations, casinos, utilities, anybody that out there has a federal monopoly or a, a local government monopoly, I say get rid of it and let them compete, let them earn their money. We have to.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Travis?
Can I get a short...
You can't ask him the sheriff question again.
Can, can I get a short answer to a question from the whole panel? Real short.
Okay.
All right. Are you ready?
I'll give thirty, 30 seconds for all the panelists.
Thank you very much. Six percent of all Nevada kids go through foster care, and yet they represent 40% of the adult male population in prison. What are you going to do about the foster care system?
Let's start with Joe.
All right, that gave me enough time to think about it.
There are no 30 seconds.
I, I think that having been a stepdad at one point in my life, I think that if, if we are alerted to extra needs for any specific group of kids, we've got to provide some programs for them to find their opportunity in life so they don't fall for the, the tragic endings, as you mentioned, ending up in prison or otherwise.
That was pretty good for, you know, not having much time.
All right, Lyle, 30 seconds.
I think the backgrounds of the individuals that are, these foster parents need to be checked out more thoroughly.
Okay, very good.
So all, you know, we underfund every agency in Nevada, and the, the foster system does need more, more funds. But having said that, the, the real problem here is jobs. And when jobs go away, you get more foster kids. That's just how it is, okay? The parents fall on hard times, they have all these issues going on, and you might have the foster kids. So the big thing is, is redevelopment in this town, get those jobs going again. But you can't do that without a better education system. Because, you know, Tesla's turning us down from doing a battery plant here because our education system is so poor.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Jason?
I know you're going to cut me off. I'm a little verbose today. I'm not sure exactly why. It might have been my Cheerios this morning. But if anybody wants to discuss this afterwards, I'd be more than happy to. It is a very complex problem, and it is not just education, it is not just any one thing. There are more people in jail for possession of marijuana. We put way too much emphasis on catching a 20-year-old with a joint and throwing him into jail, and then we have to pay for his housing and all of that. I'm sorry, I think if we let people make decisions and hold them accountable for the decisions they make, we will have more responsible people in our county. Uh, I don't believe in the, the, just give them to the jail system and let them, let them go through that to teach them a lesson when they haven't hurt anybody. Because I'll bet most of those kids that went through the, the Step System and the Child Protective Services gets 35 million dollars a year from the federal government.
There, I gave you an extra 10 seconds.
It's all, it's all together. Needs to be handled as a, as an issue.
All right, good. Ellen?
To piggyback off Mr. Schneider, along with education, it also starts with a good education, but also if, if you're going to lay off a whole bunch of people and leave, leave this county, you, as a business, you have to, you have to let us know, give us enough notice, and then give us, give us the resources to, when you do that. And I think that's a, that's a process and a learning curve that, from the recession that we just had, is that if you have to lay off, lay off people that indirectly affect the foster system, you, you gotta, you have to, you have to also treat the, the county and the city that you live in and build in, you know, some, some resources.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Susan?
I believe there needs to be, um, maybe better services for the children, possibly counseling, because I see a lot of them come through the school district, and it really breaks my heart, some of the stories I hear. I mean, it's really, really heartbreaking. And I believe that the foster parents need background checks and maybe some sort of classes again to help them, you know, with the foster children, because the foster children are usually from really bad homes. So sometimes I believe the foster parents don't know how to really handle the children, and sometimes the foster parents are worse than the actual homes they come from. So it's really, really heartbreaking. It's very touchy, and I think counseling for all and some education for the foster parents.
Thank you very much. Okay, I wrote down, it's a Travis's name, DVA from the format, so. I like to say a little more. All right, George, go ahead.
I want to ask Jason Smith, I notice you carry the Constitution around. What does that mean to you?
Well, uh, the Constitution obviously is involved in that document, but the first part of it is the Declaration of Independence. And if there is one piece of literature that strikes me more than any else, any other, besides the law from Bastiat, which I also own and I don't carry it around, independence means that we have our unalienable rights to our rights, and they are not from the government, which means that when the government oversteps its bounds, we have to put it back in check. When we don't, we have a $1.45 billion budget and we're starting to talk about more taxes for more cops. It is not a money issue. This is about our rights and what we're not allowed to do anymore, being citizens of Clark County.
Thank you. Okay, Lisa?
Um, this is a question for everybody, yes or no? Uh, the Clark County Commission seats are very expensive races to run and to try to win. I know Susan Brager has quite a war chest accumulated, and campaigns take two things to win, people and money. I would say to even have a chance in this race, in the political consulting, you have to raise 150,000 to 250,000 dollars. Yes or no, are you going to be able to raise that kind of money?
Okay, uh, Susan, yes or no, can you raise around 200,000 dollars?
I would say no.
Okay, Ellen?
No.
Jason?
Without the corporate sponsors like the incumbents have, no.
Okay, Joe?
It is difficult on any newcomer. I'm, I would be just shy.
Okay.
No.
And Mike? Mike is a yes. Okay, very good.
Just one, a single yes or no answer, starting with Susan. Do you support the use of drones here in Nevada? Drone industry?
Yes. Yes.
Against our citizens, absolutely not.
And I am also against when it impedes on private liberties.
I support the drone program.
You know, that's kind of... You know, I have good friends who are professional photographers, and they're using drones for photography, so I guess I support drones, don't I?
Okay, very good. All right, Jamison?
Uh, this question's been directed to Mr. Schneider. Uh, seeing that you have some sway in Washington, which I think is hugely important, and you mentioned Tesla, uh, what would you do on a county commission to attract alternative, alternative energy companies and technology companies, but specifically those that are run by veterans and minorities?
In the legislature, we formed a special energy committee that I was in charge of, and it was for renewable energy. And, uh, you know, I know all the renewable energy companies across the nation, and we have already done many things to attract them, and you can see them being built around here right now. And it's a thing, the groundwork we've already laid. But as I mentioned with Tesla, you know, they're saying no to Nevada right now, to Las Vegas, because of our education. And, and everything boils down to education. And that is something we need to build from the ground up, and we need to work with Clark County School District, with the university, and with the legislature. We keep saying no to proper education in Nevada.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us today and allowing us to scrutinize you so publicly. Um, we'll try not to humiliate you too badly. I hear a lot, um, from politicians and political candidates talking about government programs and, um, more studies and more funding and more taxes, and, you know, the way I understand it, that's not what America was all about. It's about the government getting out of the way to allow citizens to live their lives how they choose, not the government engineering our lives and coming up with more programs to tell us how much our lives are going to be better. With that in mind, I would like each of you to speak to me on the United States Constitution, your views on the Constitution, the Nevada State Constitution, UN Agenda 21, ICLEI, and Common Core. Start with Mr. Schneider.
Okay, we've got a lot of stuff in there. We do have some time, so I'm going to give each of you a one minute. How's that? And we'll start, mix it up a little bit, let's start with Ellen. Go ahead, Ellen. Speaking of that microphone.
Okay, um, I, I believe in the Constitution, the Nevada State Constitution. I don't know about the middle document you were talking about, so I'm sorry, I can't speak about that, but, um, Common Core is a great idea, like, uh, no child left, no child left behind, but I still believe that education, the best education is knowing that you have a base that you have to teach to, but also that you give the tools to the teacher and the people around her or him to, to foster a better education base.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go with Jason.
I think most of the issues that you, you brought up can be answered with my policy on our budget. I do not want federal strings pulling, uh, Clark County one way or another on anything, so I will say no federal money coming into Clark County's budget. We should balance our budget and honor our independence and give the people of Clark County what they demand from our education system, not necessar, and specifically Common Core, which I think is one of the worst ideas since Woodrow Wilson. After that, it comes down to independence. The people of Clark County can make decisions without the federal government, which can't balance its budget, telling us how we should do anything. Uh, as far as Agenda 21, I've been accused of tinfoil hats and all that, supporting Ron Paul. I'm not going to get into any of those things right now. Suffice it to say, Clark County should be independent, and that's where, uh, my priorities lie.
Thank you. Joe?
When you were asking your question, the thing that makes me cringe is when people just want to give a blank check to more programs, more, more government help, uh, because that inevitably leads to more taxes and less input from the private resident, the private person. Um, people forget that it's not only the people's job to elect government, it's also our job to monitor them and keep them to operating a good government. And the lack of auditing to see where the money is going, um, really scares me for our own future. Uh, we talk about, you know, adding more programs, more, you know, more things for kids, more, more police officers on the street. I come from a police family. I'm the only person in my family who didn't become a police officer. And, uh, that's fine if you're not discovering they're wasting millions of dollars in another part of their program. So we can't just keep layering more and more programs when we're not getting the most bang for bucks, sorry to use a bad expression, out of the programs that are already in existence. And when we get our, our voters, our residents, to understand that they are still involved in government, then that will lead them to continuing to have a choice so that they can make decisions on exactly, you know, how they want to preserve their personal freedoms and liberties.
Thank you, Joe. Lyle?
I, I support our United States Constitution and our state constitution. I can't comment to the ICLI, but the, uh, Common Core, No Child Left Behind, the only way to do that is put more teachers in, in the schools and reduce the class size. Uh, it's ridiculous for a teacher to, to be in a classroom with 35 students by themselves. They, those students are not getting the proper education.
Thank you.
So I, I scored up old Constitution in the 20 years I was in the legislature, and I think I did a very good job. But let me say, some people say, well, we have too much government. The citizens demand a lot of government. For instance, cell phone cameras. They want those regulated. Everybody has a cell phone, right? People are turning off their landlines and just going with cells. And so those need to be regulated. So you have to have, uh, regulations and laws in place for those. A, as we look at society today, society's been more complicated, not less. And so there needs to be regulations. You know, we're going, we're going to have all electric cars within 20, 20, 25 years. Every car will be electric and...
Except my Jag. My 72 Jag. Except for, except for Antiques. I'm going to have to brew my own.
Ant, antique, yeah. So there's going to be tremendous regulation, and, and our power source is changing. When else long are we going to have oil and coal? It's, it's going to go to renewable. And we need to, the government has to regulate all this stuff. And there is a, there is a big transmission line that's going to come through this valley. It's already, uh, on the drawing board, and it's coming out Wyoming. And guess where it's going to go? I'll just leave it up to you. This is...
Thank you, Mike. All right, Susan?
I do believe in some government regulation. I absolutely believe in, um, improving education. The No Child Left Behind Act, it's iffy. That's kind of iffy with me because I see it implemented in schools, so it's good in some cases, in some cases it's not. I am also a supporter of the Second Amendment Rights. I believe in the Constitution and the state constitution as well.
Thank you. Um, we have about four minutes. Does anybody have a...
Yes or no?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Travis. Yes or no?
To the entire panel members, the education initiative, I support education initiative, yes or no?
You're talking about the margin tax?
Yeah, the TME.
Okay.
If you're in this valley and you haven't heard that, then be asleep, right?
Oh, okay. All right, very good. Uh, yes or no, Mike?
No.
No.
I do not.
No.
And it's been no. No.
Okay, um, all right. Pamela, go right. We, we have a couple of minutes. Go ahead.
Um, this question's for Jason. Why do you not support the education act?
Well, frankly, I don't believe in pouring good money after bad. I think what we have right now is the 51st, uh, out of, uh, the United States Education, uh, departments. Putting money into that is just not going to paper over, uh, the problem. The problem is we don't have accountability, we don't have standards that are met, uh, and I just, you know, I went to school with 35 in my class, and it didn't mean that I couldn't absorb information. I believe in reading books. I believe in getting your education when it means something to you. Not everybody should go to college right after high school. There's so many of these, makes me feel good to say things, but they're not logical, they're not representative of who we are as a people. We're hardworking individuals, and we don't need just somebody telling us, "You're going to take 2% of my money out of my business," uh, to fund something that's still broken. Fix it first, and let's talk about money after it's fixed.
Okay. One more question for anybody else?
Mike, what took you so long to get here?
All right, thank you very much. Clark County Commissioner, District Director, thank you very much. Give them a round of applause.